See, they used to have to make it reduce it to writing. When I first started over this, okay, you have to reduce it. But now, the boards have clarified that that is. Exactly. Because more people use emails than old form of writing.
The situation. You still got the results. You still get the.
I'll tell you what, I had a guy I played basketball with. Guy had a heart attack, he was two years behind me. He saw him when I seen him. And this one came to heart attacks and fasts.
It is ten o'clock, I call this meeting quarter. Uh, rule call, sir?
Commissioner Gallagher.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
President.
As you wish, Dan, please, for the pledge and the dedication.
More allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord God, we thank you for this glorious and wonderful day. We ask that you give us the courage, the wisdom, the serenity to do what is always right in your eyes, Lord. Let us commence in county business and give us strength. It's in Christ's name we pray.
Welcome to this first term, first Monday of the term meeting, on Monday. And consent agenda consists of the minutes of last week's regular meeting.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Aye.
All in favor, aye. Aye, thank you. Tabled agenda items consist of the bid awards.
Just.
We have a correction from the collector, we'll get that taken care of. And then allow or approve collector for printing, prosecutor attorney for office supplies, and the sheriff department of powers and office supplies. Motion?
I move that we take the recommendation of these different departments and approve the bid. And allow fair purchase.
Second?
I'll second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Uh, we want to hear from the NEST Board and the Seymour Family Violence Council.
Do I do it right here?
Yeah.
Okay. I have no idea. Hi.
Come on up here. Yeah, and you can just stand up and turn toward it. Welcome.
Thanks. My name's Stephanie Bennett. Um, I'm the director at the Southeast Missouri Family Violence Council, uh, which is known as your local domestic violence shelter. Um, we serve five counties. St. Francis being one, Iron, Madison, Washington, and St. Jen. It does not mean, though, that we don't help victims from, I mean, we go statewide, nationwide. We've had, um, a few immigrants, too. Part of the shelter is the, what we get funds from are the NEST Board. Um, along with our state and federal funding, there's also some fundraising that we do have to do throughout the year. Um, the, the federal and state grants mostly cover the salaries of those working there. Um, but they do not cover our eight hundred dollar electric bill or our four hundred dollar water bill and stuff like that. So we do rely on fundraising as far as a couple trivia nights throughout the year. Different, we've started a new thing called Purple Pledge, uh, where you could opt to have maybe ten dollars a month, you know, directly debits from your account. So that's a fundraiser that we're doing. Um, just a multiple avenues of different things trying to raise money to, you know, help these women and children. We have a, a, a building that has thirty-two beds in it for women and children. Um, we also have court advocates, we have sexual assault advocates, we have outreach advocates. All of our services are also available for men. That's the number one question I usually get. With the exception of shelter, if you do have a man that needs a shelter, um, what we do, would do is put him up in a hotel, a local hotel, until we can get him, um, to St. Louis where there are some actual shelters for, for men. Let's see. So other than our funding, I mean, we, what we're doing is we're going out, we're helping these people learn to, to live again, basically, uh, with a life free from violence. Um, teaching them, we have parenting classes, we have anger management classes, we have life skills classes, we have domestic violence education classes. It's not something you can repair in thirty days, sixty days. Especially if you have a mother with three or four children, um, who doesn't have a high school diploma, who maybe has an eviction on her background. I mean, these are things that are going to take a lot of time to get them back to where they need to be. Alice here is the president of the NEST Board, which stands for the Network for Emergency Shelter Services. Do you want to say something about that or you want to explain it?
I'm Secretary Tracer.
Okay.
But that's okay.
Okay. She's always in charge, I thought she was the president.
Um, yeah. We get monies from the court, which are fees that you all collect on marriage licenses and, um, applications for divorces.
So you get them covered and going?
We do. I said, we encourage both.
Yeah, that's right. And, um, we have a board of, um, three to four people, um, Washington County, St. Jen, and St. Francis County. There are two of us from each county. The original program was that we were to be re-elected constantly. But I've been on the board since it was formed. And, uh, it's kind of one of these still death do us part type of things. So, um, but there's some that, that do get on and get off for, for reasons that, that we don't know about. Anyhow, um, we, um, fund the shelter twice a year on the monies that you all send. We, um, inspect the shelters periodically. And theirs is wonderful. We had, I don't know if you all have the information on how we got going, but, um, we had some problems in the beginning. We had bad advice from, from the court. We were told that money would be coming to us from the court. And it, it didn't, it just went somewhere else. Anyhow, finally, we got on schedule and we got something going. Then a few years ago, we had a seminar at, um, MAC. And we formed the NEST Board that we have at present time, which is much, much better than when we had before. That's it.
So, um, in a nutshell, basically, the NEST funds that we get, the little bit of monies from the local, um, United Way when we, we do that, we're always seeking out, um, you know, different avenues to, to keep, to keep it going. And thank goodness for the NEST Board, you know, along with some of the other counties that aren't on the NEST Board. They still do a, a donation to us. Plus, we get, um, what's called, we call it guilt tax. So when you pay a, a ticket, uh, there's a percentage in each of these little towns and all the counties where, you know, it may be only four dollars from St. Mary's, but, you know, Deluge might be ninety dollars. So those add up, too, coming in monthly. Are there any questions?
No questions.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you, you've got the media here, so you, you do fundraising other ways, correct?
We.
And you also need furniture? You know, on occasion, for people that are, you're putting out?
Correct.
How, how crowded are you normally?
Um, well, we have fourteen women right now staying at the agency and two children. Um, that's kind of middle of the road. But we had forty at Christmas with only thirty-two beds. So there was a lot of babies with, with their mothers. Um, we do have a storage shed that's located about, next door to my sister's place.
My sister's place.
It's the pink schoolhouse on the highway.
Do you get any benefit from my sister's place?
We do. Uh, Mr. Vessel, uh, gives us a little bit of monetary money once a year also. He also lets us do our fundraisers, usually at his buildings, uh, with no charge. And so the.
And tax credits available? We've talked about this before.
Yes, we have.
State tax credits?
Yes.
That you get fifty percent of your donation, you can talk to your accountant, fifty percent of your donation back, plus you get to take it off your federal and state taxes. So for most people, they can get seventy to eighty-five percent of the money that they donate to this great organization of into your place, but you can get it back. So that is, you know, it's, it's easier to get thousand dollar donations and a bunch of ten dollar donations. So those are available, you still have tax credits available this year, correct?
We do. Anything over a hundred dollars qualifies you for domestic violence tax credit.
Well, is there a way to volunteer to help the?
We do, we have a, a volunteer coordinator, Tracey Carroll. Um, our volunteer opportunities range from, I mean, uh, if you might have an hour a week, you might have ten hours a month. You know, it, basically, we work on what your schedule would be. Um, and some people don't want to do direct service volunteering. They want to be, you know, like, kind of out of the, out of the spotlight. So they're maybe doing a maintenance project or weed eating the grounds or, um, you know, coming in and teaching classes. Or it's whatever kind of your forte is, that's, that's what we would, we would take. So, I mean, we also get matched for our volunteers. So for our grants, if it's a five hundred thousand dollar grant, twenty percent of that has to be matched by our agency. And that comes in from, uh, volunteer hours, that comes in from the clothing that you're donating. We get to, to price that, you know, for each piece taken, you kind of go on a guide and, um, you get it for your mileage that we're using in our vans to drive the, the ladies to Job Look or to Apartment Hut or whatever it might be. So, um, there's, it's, it's very detailed. It's a lot of it.
Any other questions?
You said you do taking, um, um, families with boys into the shelter.
Mm-hmm.
What's the minimum age?
As long as they're. If they're eighteen, they're still in high school. Once they're out of high school, that's the, kind of the cutoff, yeah.
Okay.
And that changed. It used to be, um, when I first started in two thousand and four for the first couple of years, that we didn't take children over the age of, uh, boys over the age of twelve, I think, or thirteen. And then it was kind of like, what, I mean, I have a seventeen-year-old. I'm not going to leave if I can't take him with me and leave him in that situation. So we did change that. Um, we, we also are not a secret anymore. That's kind of a, a thing. It used to be hush, hush, you don't know where it's at. I mean, now we have a big sign. We want people to be proud they've taken the step to, uh, you know, to seek the help and to, to get those resources.
But you do have security.
We do.
Very, very good security.
We have very good alarms and we have cameras and.
They stopped me three times.
Steel doors and, yeah.
They let you continue.
It's pretty difficult. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Stephanie, you'll also take, uh, like, food supplies, health supplies.
Yes. Yeah, we, we get to get asked, what do you need? And it's good to remember, if you use it every day, so do we, times, it'd be thirty. Shampoo, bed pillows, bath towels, mattresses. I mean, any, any avenue is tough.
I have about thirty travel packs of toiletries for some reason.
Yep.
Yours.
All right.
Now yours.
Bring them over, we'll pick them up, whatever works, yeah.
Any other comments?
Do you have a Facebook page or website?
We do, we do have a Facebook page where all of our, um, activities are announced. Uh, different news, uh, things. We actually were in the Capitol last week because we wrote our first bill. And it's kind of, kind of gone up the ladder, so that's a, a new thing. So any of that stuff you can follow on our Facebook page, which is Southeast Missouri Family Violence Council. Um, or we have a website, which is cmofvc.net.
Anything else? Yes, Dan?
I'd just like to make a comment that, uh, the shelter has become a, a very good asset for police departments, sheriff departments. I remember a time when we'd have victims of domestic violence and, uh, oftentimes, they would have to stay at the jail or, or we'd have to, uh, go out and beg for accommodations for those people and their families at local hotels, churches. And now we have a place to go with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that goes back to what Alice was saying, and the fact that in the beginning, people of the different counties had passed a tax, but there was no way to funnel that money and get it to, get it started. Because in the beginning, there was no shelter. There was nothing in this area. So when they passed the tax, and that's when it all began and the ball began to roll and, and they created the NEST Board in order to monitor those funds and funnel them to the, uh, violence shelters, which at the time, in the beginning, we didn't have one in this area. So some of the money would go out of the area. Even though, you know, a victim here might be in a shelter somewhere else. So, yeah, it's been, it's been a long road.
That is interesting because, I mean, oftentimes, somebody from this area does not want to be in a shelter in this area. And they go off to maybe Country and Festus or someplace else because they don't want to stay in this area. Which I can understand some.
Except, one more question, as a practical question. Families who are in this situation, they need to get to a shelter, but they have pets. How do you handle that, what you do?
Well, recently, in the past couple, probably like two years, we have just started taking their pets. Um, as long as their pet is up to date on shots. Um, of course, their pet has to remain on a leash while it's in the living area. They have to have a kennel in their room if they're going to go run errands, that the pet needs to stay. Um, but we found that just to be easier to say, bring them on. Because I love pets and my assistant director loves pets. So in the end, we say, just bring your pets. Because, I mean, I, I, I wouldn't leave, probably, if I, I couldn't bring mine. So, you know, that's just one of those things you learn to. And, and if it is an unruly animal, there's a program called Reg Rover uh, out of California that will pay for kenneling for domestic violence victims.
Cool. Okay. Uh, now, did you bring a recommendation for a board member, with you?
The reason that we'd ask you to come is because a few weeks ago, we've already put it on the calendar that Vicki Wyble was nominated to be on your board. And somebody says, well, how does that work? How does the board work? Are you still wanting that name to be submitted? Because they need to take official action if that's the case.
Thank you.
Okay, did I have a motion to accept Vicki Wyble? I would move that we accept Vicki Wyble to be on your board? Okay, I'll second that motion. Any questions?
All right, the discussion is, you've already had the nomination and you've tabled it for a couple of weeks here, so you can act on it. So if anybody had that question, it has been brought up and it has been posted.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thank you. You've got a vital service that is almost by definition under the radar.
Right.
We appreciate you and it's obvious that people understand what you're doing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Well, one last question that I have. If somebody wants to be on one of your boards, what's the process?
Um, we have a, an outing patient that you would fill out and then you're interviewed by the executive committee. Um, and then it just kind of goes from there. We are, um, we have.
Your board votes?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So you have to be from one of the, the counties that we serve.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you, we appreciate you.
All right, thank you.
And you're a very valuable one. Use of alternative auction sites for surplus equipment. Years ago, the, uh, commission authorized the use of GovDeals to sell surplus county equipment. And that was the only, basically, one that's been approved since then. I've been working with or talking to PurpleWave.com and they have a more generalized approach of sale equipment. They go to ag trucks, uh, all kinds of equipment. They sit there and they're more professional seller. I would like to get authorization to try them on our next issue. And so, do I have a motion?
I move that we allow alternate, uh, auction sites. Because it could be another one come along as well, Peter.
Yeah.
Now, second? Okay, any questions?
So would this, is this just for a trial, run?
The one I'm thinking about, yeah. It's the next item. Uh, okay, uh, motion second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Now, to use that, uh, the Roanoke Ridge has some surplus equipment they'd like to sell. And this would be a good time to test it.
Yeah, we have, uh, we're having two of our mowers refabbed with new mower decks. Now, we're keeping our old tractors, just having them outfitted with new mower apparatuses. So our old ones, um, we have piloted up and have them.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The old ones we have piloted up and ready to sell. Now, we have two dump trucks that, one had an electrical fire under the dash and it is, uh, not repairable. We cannot get the new parts far. We have to go to salvage yard to get the parts. And, and then our other dump truck, we've had a, a, an engine issue with. And, um, they're over twenty years old, have close to three hundred thousand miles each on the trucks and we just, we just want to sell them as is. And then you see the bottom, uh, picture there, we have an old, um, Cushman-type cart that we're just wanting to get rid of. So we want to sell these items, um, on one of the auction sites that, whichever one the commission desires us to sell them. But we do need to, uh, get rid of this surplus property.
Okay, all right. Uh, I have a recommendation to authorize sale of this surplus equipment. With that being said, I would move that we authorize the Roanoke Ridge Department to sell the surplus. And with your trial, uh, per, uh, per board, okay?
Yeah, I second the motion.
Okay, any questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, thank you. Uh, approval of purchase of bulk tanks, tell me.
Yes, we would like approval to, uh, purchase some bulk tanks to go in our facility. This would be for oil, hydraulic fluid, amphreas.
Used or new?
New.
Okay.
Tanks or oil, first of all? New tanks or old tanks?
Continue.
New tanks, new oil.
Okay.
And the reason is, this year, we have, um, a new vendor in our annual bid. We've had their tanks for about fifteen years and their pumps. So with a new vendor, we have to have our own tanks to be able to purchase this oil in bulk, like we do. So we would just like approval to purchase some tanks for our facility. It's in our budget, in our building expansion budget. This will be tanks, drip trays, stands, and pumps, pneumatic pumps, for remote mounts.
Would you help, uh, provide, see all that?
Yes.
The recommendation of the highway superintendent and the highway administrator, I move that we allow the purchase of these tanks for the purpose of storing lubricants.
Any else, second? Any question? Yes.
Next year, when we bid, will we be able to state that in the bid that we are supplying our own? Because these, that was a cost that usually is borne by the supplier of the oil. This hopefully would save us something in the long run.
That is the main justification for heading in this direction.
Just wanted to bring it up.
It's so that we're not tied to any oil company when we purchase these bids. We have our own system and we just.
Because that was the thing they were hanging overhead. We want to rebid it because we have your, all your tanks and stuff.
You should be that way with the gasoline, if you're on diesel, at the old bar.
Yeah, so I just wanted to point that out.
And what propagated this is, um, the fact that we went with a different vendor for our bulk oil products. And we felt this was a time to move forward with this infrastructure improvement.
My question was new oil, not new tanks.
New everything.
Not store.
All right. Uh, so are you satisfied with action on that? Is everything done? Okay.
No, no, no.
What?
That was discussion, so you got to vote.
So I didn't vote yet. Okay, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Missouri Extension, four hundred and four. I think Miss Stephanie is going to talk to us.
How are you all today? I'm going to make it a quick report as I'm not sure how long my voice will hold out today. So, uh, my name is Stephanie Schiller. I'm the county engagement specialist in 4H youth development for MU Extension. Uh, we're located downstairs on the first floor of the courthouse annex. We have three specialists house in our office. Rebecca Blocker, who's our, uh, housing environmental design person. Kendra Graham, who is our livestock specialist, and myself. We also have Val Craig, who's our nutrition program associate. She goes into, um, schools, senior centers, um, food pantries, um, working with nutrition education, uh, targeting low-income individuals. And then Casey Amston is our 4H, uh, program associate. Casey is actually partially funded by county commission dollars. And so, uh, we are grateful for that. And she's been a phenomenal asset to our office. She came in in October of last year. Um, just to give a quick update of what's been going on in our office and by the folks that are, that are in the office. Uh, Rebecca has been working on, um, uh, different, um, uh, education trainings for, um, our early childhood educators. So she works through EduCare and provides, um, two-hour, two CEU-hour, uh, credit trainings, um, through EduCare. So that's, um, for childcare providers in St. Francis County and the surrounding counties. It's whoever will, will sign up, from my understanding. Um, which she always gets a good crowd because, um, EduCare provides really great trainings and so does Rebecca. And so they are, are very welcoming and, and she's able to provide, um, some, uh, education on topics that, that others can't. Um, and then she's also going to be working with the Bonterre Senior Apartments uh, to provide training in, um, energy savings and home fall prevention. Those are, um, areas that she has a specialty in. And so, um, they received a grant to upgrade or to, um, work on issues in their apartments. And so that'll be her, her portion of that, which is, um, to provide that education. She has also done some integrated pest management, um, uh, consultations within the county. Uh, so talking about how to, um, take care of different bug, bug infestation issues. Um, she also worked, and this isn't on here, but she worked with a, a student at MAC uh, recently to talk about bed bugs, um, to give an educational session at that. And so, um, she's been busy doing, doing different, different activities like that. Um, in the 4H world, so we're really getting started and, and, um, for those that, that know 4H, uh, July is our, is the pinnacle time of the year. It's the county fair. And so, um, we work all year up to that pork, up to that point. Um, in January, we had a kickoff event, um, just welcoming our new families, um, welcoming our, our, our parents, um, trying to help them understand what 4H is. Um, also worked in January with, um, some, actually, some Illinois Extension educators to talk about the differences in extension in, um, the states. Because, um, though we are funded in this, in basically the same way, our system works differently and each state is, is different. Um, I do some extra, um, workshops throughout the state based on, um, something called the Youth Program Quality Assessment. So what we do is we go into our Twenty-First Century After-School Programs and, um, there's a couple here in this county, but they're all over the state. And, um, we assess them, we work, um, we do objective assessments and we talk about their environment and, and what they're doing with the kids and things like that. So we assess them and then we go back in and we take some of the things that they struggle with or that they're not scoring quite as high on. Um, and we do workshops with our teachers and our educators to help them, to help them score higher. Um, and these are, these assessments range from anything from, um, we talk about a safe environment, a welcoming environment, to, um, youth choice, youth voice, things like that. So I do those workshops as well. Um, Casey has been working with, uh, St. Joseph's School and, um, to, uh, do a 4H STEM lab. And she's done several of those throughout the past three months. And then she's also been working with Bismarck on a STEM lab on a grant, um, program as well. And so that's taken up some of her time. She's also done some, um, she's working with Sunrise Elementary. Um, they have a 4H spin club in St. Francis County. And, uh, she's done the Horseless Horse Project area and that. So these kids that are interested in having horses that can't or don't have a place to put them, they have the opportunity to experience the 4H Horse Program as well. Couple other things, we've done quite a bit of traveling. Just, it's that time of year where our kids go on, uh, 4H trips, like team conference and new civic leaders summit. Um, and then also, uh, we do some trainings. Uh, some Extension Council members from the area were, uh, and myself, were taken up to, uh, Columbia this past week and, uh, went through a, a basic training of Extension Council members' roles, responsibilities, and what they'd like to see from Extension as well. And so that was, that was, uh, Thursday and Friday of last week. Um, Kendra's been the busy one. We're all busy, but she's, it's been a lot of fun for her. Um, she is working on various cattleman's programs. So the uh January twenty-second one was a heifer development program. And she had thirty-eight people at that one, so that was a, a hot topic. Uh March fourth was farm finances, eighteen participants. And then April eighth, we have an electric fence demonstration happening out at the Weber Road facility. So that'll, that should be an interesting thing, so if you see things set up out there, um that's what's going on that day. Uh Cattle AI School, um she's really hit a um her niche there. A lot of people are interested in how to arti- artificially inseminate their cattle. It's a cost-saving measure. And so her first class was January, or her first session was January eighteenth and nineteenth, seventeen people. And that was with the snow, cause that was one of those snowy days. That was a pretty, those were pretty rough days. Um and then our, her next one is May seventeenth and eighteenth, and it's already full. So these are classes that people sign up four, five to six months in advance, um if they can. And so it's a, it's a pretty, um it's a pretty big thing. She caps enrollment at twenty just because that's as many as, that can, they can really adequately work with for those two days. Uh Show Me Select, which brings um uh sound-tested heifers into um, into the communities and, and sells them. They are set by a rigorous, a rigorous set of standards. The next sale is April nineteenth in Farmington and May third in Fruitland, and she works with both of those. Um and then she's already begun her pre-reading visits for the fall sale, so that's a continuous program. And then she's also working um to hire, working with the group to hire a Dick County Livestock Specialist. So there are openings um all throughout the state of Missouri, and that's one of them that's closed. Um she'll work intricately with that person, and so that's why they have her on their committee. Other things that have gone on, she's had a animal science ISE FFA judging contest out at um, it's, they start at Mineral Area College. Chad Fallis puts that together every year. I think they had over nine hundred students this year. I think she had about a hundred and twenty at her livestock judging. So um that's a big thing that brings in almost a thousand people from all over, just to the MAC campus. And so that has really grown throughout the years. Um and then the CMO Bull Sale was March twenty-second. Her upcoming programs uh will be a heifer, another heifer development workshop on April twenty-fifth in Frederick Town and Grazing School, um is May sixth and seventh at Mineral Area College. Finally, just to give a rundown of what Val's been doing, this is from January and February. She's been at Roosevelt Elementary, Jefferson Elementary, Truman Learning Center, and Lincoln Intermediate. And just with those contacts, she's served over, she's served about twenty-five hundred students just in those uh times and those, um and most of those were multiple-session work uh times. So it's like they spend half an hour, forty-five minutes in a class for multiple weeks. And that's really what they're focusing on is multi-session so that they can really get the meat and potatoes of what she's teaching. Um and then for adult contacts, um it's been Bismarck Senior Center and the St. Joseph's Food Pantry where she's done either workshops or um displays and, and SNAP outreach. So helping folks if they um need to qualify, if they want to see if they qualify for SNAP benefits, things like that. That's part of her um, her uh job as well. So um total contacts for her have been over twenty-seven hundred uh folks contacted in just two months. And that was just January and February, so.
Your question, Stephanie. Thank you so much. Your voice held up well, unfortunately mine right now, allergies are kicking in, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now we uh need to talk about representation for a lawsuit to be filed. And uh this is the uh situation Kenny Rohr is very much involved with. Uh Blake Hill has been handling this case and it's been dismissed on numerous occasions, but they've tried one more time. And so Blake had us the files and he's been very successful. And it, excuse me, it is uh our opinion, my opinion, that we should continue with that success. So I would like to offer the uh proposal that we uh hire Blake Hill uh to represent the situation in this matter. Motion?
I would move that we enter into an agreement to represent Mr. Rohr with the attorney firm, uh, not like field.
And I second the motion.
Okay, uh questions? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, appreciate that. Uh credit card late fees discretion, Mr. Engler.
Thank you. Came in January, you all asked to have evaluation, things that we felt needed to change. Next item is one of those also. But at the time, um I brought this up because the ladies that have worked in there for years have told me that we have a problem with late fees, charges on some of the credit cards. Uh and I gave example of somebody that our auditor had spoke with on numerous times, the department, that had been late and we end up paying. And you sent a, a very direct email saying this can't be done anymore because what I'm here to tell you today is if we're gonna allow it, then you all have to put a line item in your budget for it. Because we have, if we get audited and we show several hundred dollars over a course of the year in miscellaneous or for something other than what it is, you've got some misappropriation of funds, uh according to this. So I'm just telling you, if we're not gonna be able to correct the situation, I know you're in, in bad situation because this person doesn't work correctly for you. But yet if they don't pay their bills on time, we've got another thirty-eight dollar bill this weekend. We got the bills presented on the day they were due for next month. That was thirty-something dollars. And um we can't, with the four check methods, we can't get a check out by design that quickly uh that we could've gotten it paid the day of, that it was due. So my, I, I talked to the ladies, I said, have we ever had any problem with this? And they said, well, we did years ago on a couple occasions. And we've had on occasion somebody go along because they admitted to it that, but not on a consistent basis. But they had one years ago with the auditor, actually, uh not, uh having problems getting the bills paid on time. And what the commission did at that time was set up line items for late fees. That by bringing it to the light, that seemed to uh slow the problem down because people don't want to show that their tax dollars were paid for late, late fees on credit cards rather than for the intended purposes.
And if you do have the late fees, that ultimately it could amount to a, an audit finding, correct?
Absolutely. You can't keep saying, this one has been a few hundred dollars, I've got them here for the last few years. I guarantee you they're not accrediting it on their, in their accounting in their offices to late fees. Uh it's gotta be being said that it's something else. So to protect you all, protect the county, I think we ought to either start, if you, because that person doesn't work directly for you, you need to put a late, late fee uh line on the uh budget.
Commissioner, when I uh came into office two years ago, I, I noticed consistent late fees. Not just, and I'll say across the board, different, different departments. And uh so we've been keeping individual track of, of all of this. Uh the most glaring case was there was a charge for twenty-five dollars and eighty cents. Late fee was sixteen dollars on twenty-five bucks.
So eighty percent?
Yeah. And we're, we're seeing this, I mean, we've had talks with department heads, you've sent out the emails. I mean, something, it's taxpayers' money and, and individually at your own household, you wouldn't stand for it. So we can't stand for it either. So I understand there's extenuating circumstances, vacations, illness, or whatever the case might be. But uh when, when we see this consistency, we, we really have to wonder what's going on.
Can we alter the budget by adding a line item at this time of year?
You can add a line item, altering the budget probably isn't a good phrase. But you can make an amendment to it. But you have to be grassroots on this. Uh we're, we're gonna have to do, I've done face-to-face with, with some of the folks and it just doesn't seem to get through. So any assistance would be good.
Which departments has been late?
That's drug court. That's one of them.
Drug court is, is the largest consistently.
And they are not a county employee per se. But we, the paperwork goes through the county. And so they're just not timely in approving their credit card bills. And so by the time, and we have a four approval process of approval of the bills, the time, and that might take a day or so. Well, they get it in by their, the deadline of the date. But then that doesn't allow for the approval and the check issued, so and check receipt. So it's, it's incurred so.
And I can speak for, since I was part of that group that authorized the money for drug courts, that was not the intended use of the money. And we, we brought it from the state, you know, so.
I don't know how you could explain to the public how you're using taxpayer money to pay late fees. I just don't know how you defend that.
That's what, you asked me to examine those, those are one of the things that auditor said that he talked to him three times. And then you sent the directive, at some point we have to show the, the public this is how much it's being spent on.
There's been multiple attempts to get this cleaned up. So do we need a, a agenda item?
I don't think you need an agenda item, you just need to get with the auditor and, and figure out how you uh put a line item on it.
There's no malicious intent here, not at all. What we're just pointing out is it's a, it's a consistent problem.
Okay, uh let's get with that and get that set up and maybe add the line item and then make sure all the accounting goes in to show that. And then there's accountability on that. Any other questions? Okay, thank you for that report. Building permit fee increase and late fee charge, sir?
Yeah, we, we looked at uh, as of this, another one that we talked about. We hadn't adjusted this one here. We were charging eight dollars. Now, most of all municipalities charge many more times that. But I gotta tell you, they go out and inspect. They have a building inspector that goes, and we have to pay for it. We don't have to do that, all we have to do is cover the cost of the issuance and keeping the records. So what our purpose is, is just to try to cover the cost of that. And with, with insurance and everything else we pay our employees and, and the amount of time we have to keep and bring it up and then present it to the assessor's office, we estimate that actual cost to be around twenty dollars. And we charge eight, and it hadn't been brought up in a long time. So what I, I'd ask if you wanna act now on that or if you wanna wait to the second. As far as the, the main reason we want this is to alert the assessor's office when there's a construction project taking place of more than six hundred dollars. We have no hammer on that because we have no late fee. We had, I think, six, is that right, last year? Six building permits in the county.
And.
That's, that's right. So then the auditor, I mean, the assessor has to go out and search for these people. So what we'd like to do, as I was telling them, we don't wanna make it just terrible, but we want it to make it to the point where you're gonna get one. Because if a construction project starts, and the start we define that by having a foundation uh being, being started, then they would have to come in and buy the twenty-dollar fee, but then they'd have to pay a twenty-five dollar penalty for not buying it before you started construction. If the construction is substantially complete, and that's the assessor's term, when they, you know, tell you when the thing's done, and they still haven't, and we found this house that we bought and they never did buy a permit, then they should have to buy the permit and have a fifty-dollar fine for not paying it on time. We're hoping, the idea is to get the people to report them. We don't wanna charge them any more than it costs us to issue it. But we wanna give them an incentive to, to buy the things. And I think that if we uh find a couple people that may, now, this is for discussion. And that's, I don't, I'm not asking for an action today. So if other people have an, uh actually, uh the assessor came up with a good idea. He said, you know, if you're gonna charge them the, the fee after you catch them and a fine, then the combination should be a little bit lesser than, cause there are some people wanting to be a hundred bucks. If they get caught afterwards, they built the property and uh, and are a big addition to their house and didn't get a permit, then there should be a hundred-dollar fine. He, he, and his belief was that we should make them buy the, the permit and then make the fine less. So I'd like that, and then I'd like to come back to a recommendation next week so you can just act on it. So if you all have any, or if anybody else has some, uh some input, we'd like to do it. But the, the purpose is to, to get the people to, let us know what's happening so that they can assess it properly. Now, that's always an interesting dilemma because people don't let the property assessed as quickly as they put it up for the most part, you know?
Okay, well, thank you for the report. And let's put it on the agenda for next week for action on this. And by that time, we'll hopefully have some finite details on penalties or.
Well, I'd like to leave it open a little bit, cause we may come back with you a little bit. Somebody said, well, the problem with that is, we'd like to know what the problem is.
Certainly, I'm putting input on it, so.
Yep.
Is next week to.
Nope, I think we can get it done.
Okay, well, then we'll uh not table it, but put that on next week's agenda. Any questions? Yes, Rich?
Uh Kevin, my only comment to this uh would be the idea to issue a stop work order on the work if no permit had been secured.
Do you have a project that you're working on?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a project that you're working on?
No, sir. The project I, the project I worked on was, what, my project was properly permitted at the eight-dollar rate, which I thought was absolutely low and without any expectations.
Yeah, AT&T actually laughed at me last week when I told them I was gonna charge them eight bucks to build their tower.
Yeah.
And they said, eight bucks?
Eight bucks. That's my only comment.
So you're saying that there should be some action? And I don't know if the county has the ability to stop work if they do not have a permit until they get that fine. And we'll, we'll have to look into that.
That goes into inspections and a lot of things.
Yeah, then you'd have to have somebody from the assessor's office that catches them. And then we'd have to have the sheriff involved, so we'll, we'll talk, but that would be a little bit more cumbersome.
This would also help the floodplain administrator as far as any new buildings or structures built in floodplain.
Let them know, yeah.
The primary question asked on the permit is, is this in the floodplain? Uh any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Uh Special Road District, uh William Hoppy died sadly a few weeks ago. And now they've asked that we appoint John Clark to fulfill his unexpired term. Motion?
I would move that we appoint Mr. John Clark to the Special Road District.
And I second the motion.
Okay, all, any questions? All in favor, say aye. Oh, Rich?
Yeah, another one. What is the Special Road District?
Okay, Patrick, you want to add what?
Well, there, there's a Special Road District in the city of Park Hills. It's the only Special Road District in this county. Road districts are, are kind of strange. In St. Jimmve County, you've got several road districts. They own, they have their own people. They have their own uh specialists for the levees. You've got uh the gravel roads that are involved. Well, this isn't that. They receive monies from the county, and I believe it's from the collector. Um and they have a board. They work to looking at doing big projects like bridges. The last one that they did was the St. Joe Bridge over by the radio station.
K R E I.
Okay, come on.
Okay, come on.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
Thank you.
Just clarify that.
Uh so that was the project they did. And we had reached out to them years and years ago, tried to get uh the soft match credit off of that bridge. Well, that decision went all the way up to the federal level and we did not get the funding for that. But uh that's, that's your Special Road District.
Those people who live in that district have their own tax issue on the tax bill. Yes?
Uh, actually, there's two in St. Francis County.
There's two?
Yes, Levington has a Special Road District also.
Thank you.
That's a less mistake than Ken.
Mr. Clark is, is a member, I think he was on the council and he's retired from utility companies, something like that. And, and lives in Park Hills, that's why.
Have any other questions?
Thank you.
I, thank you, Rich. I, yes, Ken?
Actually, the Road District plant was first put in with a higher rate than the county road bridge.
Right.
Now it's become a lower.
It's in addition to the other two, also.
No.
Oh, it's not in addition?
It's not either.
Okay.
They virtually have little or no funding at this point.
Any other questions? Okay, uh have a motion second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, aye. Okay, next week's meeting will be back on the Tuesday. Other business correspondence? Public comments? Departmental reports? I think Mr. Engler probably wanted to talk about election.
We got the election tomorrow. Uh we've got everybody picking up their, the supervisors are picking up the, the packets today. We have institute, uh Mark will have the southern part as the overall supervisor, Hedrick. And he's come in, he was in Saturday with us, programming all the machines. And then Charlotte Boyer will have the northern part. One of the things that I did wanna point out, we need more poll workers. We're gonna have four elections last year and we had a pool of, of alternates. And now we went through every one of those, so I'm calling people that I know that aren't fully employed so that they can fill in our spots tomorrow.
Charlie's representing the northern district and Mark's representing the southern district?
Shh, right now on the elections, they're gonna be stationed there. So if somebody has a problem, they will, they can get there within about ten minutes. Next year, we hope to have four. If I, if I have this human resource person that slashed the deputy, we will be spread out throughout the county. So if somebody becomes indignant or they have a clerk problem, or if there's a computer failure, we will have somebody that knows how to uh, to work on the computer, be, be there within ten minutes. And that's it. Rather than hiring the fourth person that we used to have that was there all year and liked after this election, unless there's a special election, there's no reason to have another person there. We're, we're getting the people that have experience in it, they're only coming in for two days. And, and they're not, you know, we don't have any benefits, they're not full-time employees. They're gonna come in for the jobs they, that we need done and take care of, that's what we're doing.
Any questions?
Oh, and we do need Democrats. Yeah, you gotta have both parties and uh. I need some, I need some Dems in the last. Mark said that in the last election or two, we've really had a difficult time getting some people that you have to declare your Democrat. Cause I, you know, are to open a precinct, I, I have to have two Democrats and two Republicans present. Everything we do, checking the machines, we have to have a Democrat, Republican president. When we're here, we test the machines afterwards, we have to have a, a Democrat that's a, a president and Republicans president. When we, when we, the machine out there, the absentee, I didn't realize all this. Before we put, put the top on, we have to have a Democrat and Republican there along with an official saying that the thing is empty. And then they seal it and the seal cannot be broken. And when the seal's broken, you have to have a Democrat and a Republican president showing that the seal is broken before. The, the box that all the absentees that get mailed in, that is certified by a Democrat and a Republican that it is in fact empty. And then a seal is put on it, and when the seal is broken, that there has to be a Democrat and a Republican president showing that the seal was not broken and, until it's time to count the ballots. So you have to have Republicans and Democrats and all that.
So two questions. One, is it just because of the primary issue that you can't have independents helping out with this? And two, I know a lot of Democrats, where do they sign up that wanna do this?
At our office. Yeah, uh first question. It's not because of that, it's because of our, our election laws saying that our, they have to be. An independent can work. If I have eight people like tomorrow at the, at Ward Two, there could be a couple independents, but.
There must be at least one, each major party.
That's exactly right. Now, there's a bill for the, the House, no, the Senate, because it passed the House declaring closed primaries. I don't think it's gonna pass because it's a bad idea for us in my area. Purple areas, it's a bad idea because you would have to declare twelve weeks prior to a primary if you're a Democrat or Republican. If you do not declare, you cannot come in the day of an, an election and vote. You have to be a declared Democrat or declared Republican, it passed through the House last week. And the, the, the argument for that is, is there's too many places where there is, if you're in Joplin, the only way that Democrats vote is if they vote in a Republican. if you're in Joplin, the only way that Democrats vote is if they vote in a Republican primary, because that's the only races. And if you're in St. Louis, the only way Republicans vote is in the pri- so they're influencing those races of the other party, even though they don't belong to that party, that's the big argument. My point is here, people are reluctant to tell you, to even tell you that day, to point to the party, 'cause that's one of the things in the training we talked about, is you do not ask them, do you wanna, if you know that they're Carol Gamble, and they, that, that she's on the central committee, you don't say, Carol, do you want a Republican ballot? You have the choices, and you say, point to the one you want, so the people behind you don't, don't have to. Are people like that?
Anonymity.
Anonymity, I was gonna say that, but it was, it was too difficult word. Um, anyway, to declare twelve weeks prior, and what hap- that's before the, the, the filing closes. So what if your best friend then, who is another party, declares that last day, you can't vote for him? Because you've already declared yourself of the other party, prior to, and, as far as workload, we'd have to send to our, how many voters do we have, tw- uh, forty?
Forty thousand.
Forty-something thousand voters, we would have to send things to them for them to declare. I mean, so hopefully it won't pass.
So if the bill didn't pass, you would have to let those people know.
I'd have to. Perhaps, unfunded mandate is what we used to call those, yeah. Exactly right.
Any other questions? Okay, any other departmental reports? Oh, I didn't do the.
You didn't do the question, do the answer first?
No, uh, I, I moved your motion, uh, adjourned. Well, I know, and I did get the adjournment slide on.
I moved with adjourned.
Okay, so, all in favor, aye? Now, I, I'm.